Good evening. I'm John Wensky, Chairperson of the Shrewsbury School Committee, and welcome to our meeting for Wednesday, September 11th, 2024. Tonight's meeting is being broadcast live on Selco Channels 29 and 329 and streamed live on Shrewsbury Media Connection's website. Thank you to Shrewsbury Media Connection and Liz Poplowski for their assistance with our broadcast. Tonight's meeting will be rebroadcast on SMC's website and their YouTube channel between now and our next scheduled meeting. Before we begin tonight's agenda, I'd like to recognize the significance of today's date as a remembrance of the tragic events that occurred 23 years ago on September 11th, 2001. Tonight, we honor the victims, the brave first responders, and all families that were tragically impacted during that day, including our school committee colleague Lindsay Heffernan, who lost her sister Neely Heffernan on that tragic day. Ms. Heffernan, would you like to say a few words?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Wensky. People think about September 11th, and they think about New York, and they think about DC, and they certainly think about Boston and the webs that really run through all of our communities. And those webs come right into Shrewsbury. My sister was 32, and on one of the planes out of Boston that day, she had an infant who was seven months old. My three kids, Shrewsbury School Committee members, never got to meet. They're hysterical a lot. And those wounds are still there, and they don't really heal, even though there are amazing people who reach out from near and far every year on this day for me. I have managed to be on school committee for six years and never have to go through one of these meetings on this particular day. But when I step back and I think, and I think about what causes terrorism, it's fear, and it's division, and it's hate, and it feeds on difference and lack of opportunity. And when I think about education at its absolute best, what it is is exactly the opposite, that it's about closing divides and building bridges and breathing love into difference and ensuring safety based on facts and reality. It's welcoming new ideas and new individuals into our spheres and valuing critical thinking to break down false narratives and tropes and providing opportunity and excellence and high standards to all. I know this is at the core of what we do. It's our goals. We just reviewed our goals of our excellence and equity for everybody. It's central to my service on this committee and being here today, and I have incredible pride in this district and what we try to do in the educators and in the students, who I think really value and uphold that every day. And I really appreciate your letting me share a little. I'm not going to make it through the National Anthem without crying, so I might as well just put that out there now. But I know that what we're doing is so important locally, nationally, and internationally. So, thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Heffernan. For those that are in the audience here at Town Hall and for those of you at home for watching, please join us in a moment of silence to remember all the lives that were impacted on September 11th, 2001. I'd ask you for a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Continuing with our tradition of school committees' opening meeting, I'd like to now introduce the Shrewsbury High School Chamber Choir under the direction of Michael La Permato, the SHS teacher of the Performing Arts Music and Choir. So please rise for the singing of our National Anthem.
Oh, say, can you see why the tides early night? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose bright stripes and bright stars
rode over the spires?
Over the ramparts we glowed,
stars so gallantly streaming?
And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night That our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave O'er the land of the free And the home of the brave?
Thank you so much for that tremendous rendition. Dr. Sawyer, you want to introduce us to the choir?
I'd be happy to. We're very pleased to have the Chamber Choir with us this evening. I'm going to mention them by their different parts. Our sopranos are Makila Boucher in Grade 11, Arpan Chawra in Grade 12, and Sanjana Palay also in Grade 12. Our altos were Aditi Ashokumar, Grade 12, Anshul Karthik in Grade 11, Agnia Katzman, Grade 11, and Tayisha Malord, Grade 12. Our tenors are Nicholas Claros in Grade 11, Callan Fitch, Grade 11, Connor Hannah, Grade 11, and Nathan Johnson, also in Grade 11. And our bass singers were Adarsh Balakrishnan, Grade 11, Christian Salvin, Grade 11, and Prabav Sai Valamudi, also Grade 11. And two members couldn't be with us this evening. In the sopranos, Macy Kent in Grade 12 and Austin Hopping in Grade 12, outstanding group of performers under the direction of Mr. Michael La Permato. As I mentioned on opening day, and I'm happy to share with those watching, that Mr. La Permato, last year, longtime teacher in our district, extremely successful, award-winning teacher, who last year was recognized as one of 25 semifinalists out of over 2,000 nominated across the United States for the Grammy National Music Educator of the Year Award. And thank you, we really appreciate this extraordinary recognition. Thank you for making our opening school committee meeting of the year extra special, and we appreciate you, and thanks for being here this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, the first item on our agenda is public participation. Tonight, we've not received requests to speak at public participation. It's available to any and all residents that wish to address the committee regarding concerns pertaining to policy, budget, and the performance of the superintendent. In the future, if anybody wishes to speak at public participation, they should contact the chairperson in advance of the next scheduled school committee meeting. The next item on the agenda is chairperson and members' reports, colleagues, anything to report. I do have an update for the public with regards to the ongoing negotiations with our Shrewsbury Paraprofessionals Association. I serve on the school committee subcommittee for negotiating, along with Ms. Sandy Fritz. And we've had about 15 meetings since January 22nd. We were able to resume our discussions this past week. We had hoped that we would schedule some time over the summer to continue those negotiations. Unfortunately, the SPA was not able to meet during the summer due to scheduling issues. So, we've resumed. We're making progress, and we've got several meetings scheduled over the next month. So, just wanted to make sure that people knew that negotiations were ongoing. So, thank you for that. The next item on the agenda is superintendent's report. Dr. Sawyer, welcome back.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Wensky. I'd certainly want to begin by saying thank you to everyone who helped our school district open smoothly. We're into our third week of school. There's a lot of work that happens over the summer in order to make sure our schools are ready. I want to appreciate it, and we'll speak and report a little bit later, but our custodians and public buildings staff to get the buildings ready, our food service staff to get our cafeterias ready, our bus drivers, our secretaries and clerical support staff, our extended school care staff, our paraeducators, our nurses, our teachers, all of our professional educators, and our administrators worked really hard to make sure we had things in place for a successful first few weeks of school. I also want to thank our families. There's a lot of work our families do to make sure our students are ready, and I think there's a consensus that there, certainly when I visited the schools and talking with principals, that there is a positive energy, and we like to see this time of year, of course, with the return in the new school year. We've had wonderful weather, and it's been a very good opening overall for our schools. So, thank you to all those folks. I also wanted to mention and recognize some people that on our opening staff assembly that I recognized for their excellence. Each year, I give out superintendent's awards and some other special named awards for people who go above and beyond, who've done extraordinary work for the Shrewsbury Public Schools on behalf of our students and staff and families. This year, I recognized Jen Umilli, who is a secretary at Floral Street School, Alfredo Olivera, who is a custodian at Shrewsbury High School, Kim Fitzpatrick, who is our budget analyst here in Central Office, Larissa Bryant, a paraprofessional who is at Coolidge School, Chris Wilkinson, a paraeducator who's at Sherwood Middle School, Mindy Moynihan, a longtime science teacher, particularly chemistry, at Shrewsbury High School, Sarah Powers, a special educator at Oak Middle School, and my former student at Floral Street School many years ago. Brittany Zaleski, our physical therapist for the school district, who does an excellent job in that role, and particularly for her work to bring the Special Olympics Unified Program to our Parker Road preschool, to our youngest learners. And Meg Belcito, our Assistant Superintendent for Student Services, for the extraordinary work she's done, particularly connected to that Unified Schools Project with Special Olympics as one, the founding and success of our RISE program in Maple and Main, another, and her leadership overall of an outstanding special education and student services program. We have three named awards. The Jane Wilken Award, the retired principal of many years of Patton School and a special educator in the district, a psychologist prior to that, went to Melissa McCann, who is our math coordinator for our middle school grades. The Thomas Kennedy Award, named after the retired director of Human Resources, was actually shared by three individuals, all assistant principals, Shelley Hoy, the assistant principal at Beal School, Scott Yonker, the assistant principal at Oak Middle School, and one of them, and P.G. O'Connell, one of our assistant principals at Shrewsbury High School. And then finally, the Chinway Yay Award, which is in honor of a teacher of Mandarin who had an untimely death a few years ago, who was a wonderful education professional, given to people who represent the profession so well, and not only serve students well, but also their fellow educators, was given collectively to our kindergarten through Grade Six Literacy Council teachers. It's actually 16 of them, so I'm going to read them off. They did work over the past two years to really get us in position to fully launch this year our new literacy program in grades kindergarten through grade six. They are in alphabetical order: Heidi Anderson, Melissa Barrett, Christina Baumann, Moira Christie, Tiffany Grillo, Rima Hanna, Erin Riscosi, Bethany Jones, Kristen Junkins, Jenna Lavasser, Kristen Lapporto, Catherine Mills, Wendy Moran, Julie Murphy, Suzie Speed, and Megan White. And that's quite a powerful mix of some very longtime veteran teachers in our school district, some who are newer to our district over the last several years. They're spread across all of our K through six schools, and we're really just super impressed with the teacher leadership that they brought to this project. So, it was really my pleasure to, in front of all of their peers, honor all of these individuals with awards and a variety of roles that are all critically important to the high functioning of our school district. And that is superintendent's report this evening.
Great, thank you so much, Dr. Sawyer. The next item on our agenda is a time-scheduled appointment. It is a vote to accept Project Lead the Way biomedical science grant. In August, the district was awarded a $10,000 Project Lead the Way grant to assist with implementation of a biomedical science program in partnership with the Arthur Blanchard Charitable Trust. These funds will be used to expand the existing biomedical science program at Shrewsbury High School by purchasing additional instructional materials, given the enrollment in this program is increasing from about 20 to 90 students. Mr. Girardi was available to us if we have any additional questions on this grant and recommends that the committee vote to accept the grant.
And I think, Mr. Riscosi, the director of Science and Engineering, was planning on coming this evening. I noticed that he didn't seem to be feeling particularly well today at a meeting we had earlier, so I told him, "Please don't." But I think, as you described it, Mr. Wensky, it's pretty straightforward in terms of what the funding is for. This is the second time we're receiving a grant from the 1-8 Foundation, which is an organization that funds this Project Lead the Way program, which is a national program, as I think you mentioned, that provides this kind of hands-on learning. But that's what the money is for, and we would like the committee to accept it so that we can move forward with utilizing those dollars.
We always appreciate grant funding, for sure, especially when it comes to career and technical education areas of focus. Colleagues, any questions or comments? All right, there being none, I need to request a vote that the committee vote to accept the Project Lead the Way biomedical science fiscal year 2025 grant for $10,000 as presented and use such funds for the intended purpose. May I have a motion?
Still moved?
Seconded?
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much. All right, the next item on the agenda is a time-scheduled appointment. It is a report on the school year opening highlights. Dr. Sawyer and Ms. Clouder will provide highlights from the opening of the 2024-2025 school year, and Ms. Clouder included a memo for us to review. So with that, I'll get over to the-
Thank you. As Ms. Clouder comes to the table, I will, I mentioned we had our opening staff assembly, which was held in the high school fieldhouse, which I thought was, and also want to commend, we had students from our speech and debate program. We did this, that's a tradition we've had for the last many years. We had a good launch of the first day of school on the Tuesday. This is the week prior to Labor Day. Students were in school Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, and then Friday was a professional development day, where there was a focus on different departmental professional development needs, depending on what those departments are focused on this year. Literacy was the big focus at grades K to six, of course, in particular. And then that afternoon, we had an assembly for all, this is our professional staff, our paraprofessional staff, as part of the date in October for professional development, where we convened in the high school auditorium and did some work, had some presentations that myself, Dr. Lozot, Ms. Belcito made relative to some of the work we're doing this year around student behavior and discipline and moving forward with Positive Behavior Interventions and Support System, known as PBIS, which is a research-based system. We'll be bringing some information to the committee about that later in the school year as we begin to implement the first phase of that. But we wrapped up that afternoon with what we thought was a really special opportunity that Ms. Clouder will talk to you about more, someone that we were able to have join us for part of our Summer Institute back in June for staff professional development, and based on how people's experience with her, multiple people said to me, "We need to bring her back." And we thought this is a really good opportunity to do that, and we had her actually for the entire week. So, I'll turn it over to Ms. Clouder, and she can tell you a bit more about Mary Maker.
Happy to, thanks. It's great to be back in session and a pleasure to detail our visit with Mary Maker, who, thanks to Joe's work behind the scenes, we were able to get her here for a week in residence, and that just afforded us lots of opportunities that I'll tell you a little bit about. First, I just want to set the context of why, why she came to the institute, and then why I think she resonated so well with staff. In Shrewsbury, our professional development days are tied to our strategic goals, and initially, equity was its own strategic priority, you'll remember, in our first strategic plan. Going forward, we made a really conscious decision to embed equity in each of our priorities. And when we think about equity, we're thinking in terms of educational excellence, closing gaps, and making sure that all students have educational opportunities that enrich their lives, enable them to be successful, not just while they're with us in Shrewsbury, but in their life after high school. And also, we think about the well-being aspect of success and wanting students to feel a deep sense of belonging so that they are connected to others within their communities and then outside our schools. So, we think about this continuum of working from understanding and appreciating our diversity to fostering the belonging, to working on inclusion. One of the things that's really important is engaging diverse populations within the school in decision-making and thinking, and making sure that we are stopping to hear about different perspectives and invite feedback about our best-intentioned systems and how they impact all the diverse people in the system. And so, Mary coming and asking for feedback from families, representing all of her experience, is really different from me asking that same question. It's hard when you're working within a system that benefited you, frankly, as a student, to critique it. And so, having different perspectives allows us to kind of see our system in a different way. It also calls us to think as leaders about cycles of improvement that really measure belonging, and so, getting feedback from people is one way we do that, either through the surveys that we collect from PD days or from families through Panorama. But also, there's a softer goal of kind of building relational trust and safety that comes from affirming race and other identities in events like that. So, this is the first time that we really partnered our professional development with an evening for parents, and it was exciting to see the results because we've frankly been trying to look for the secret formula on how to engage families in the evening, and I think we hit on something that holds promise. So, I'm just going to play a little bit of this, and I don't know why we're getting the first part of the intro. I'm going to play just the first three minutes or so for people who at home don't know when I say Mary Maker, who I'm talking about, or to get a glimpse about why her story resonates so well. I'm hoping it's going to play.
I said, "Did he know?"
Nope.
I see who's doing this.
I thought this was embedded, sorry about that.
This girl graduated graduating. When memories of Sassanlyn as a child, their beautiful, sweet memories of family, of love. When our village was attacked, we lost family members and my friends that we used to play together, and you have to leave. No one could afford my schooling. I'd crawl back through the window and pretend like I was a part of the class. My education was being distracted, but it came to a point where the school just got tired of me and just allowed me to be in school, and I was able to graduate. It took me four years trying to apply for scholarships. I gave it my all. It was a program in Rwanda that would prepare me for college. I said, "Yes." I had to study day and night. I was afraid of failing. I was afraid of going back to the compound at the same time. And I finally got admitted to St. Olive College, like I'm going to America. I'm like, "Okay, I don't know what state I am going to." Minnesota. I'm so excited. My father used to emphasize education was my first husband. So, I wouldn't end one dream, too. So, this weekend is all about being a graduate, causing chaos to the world, in a good way. But I'm really so excited to finally, you know, to finally say I graduated college. That hasn't sucked yet, but I'm really looking forward to walking across that island, taking my diploma, and marrying my education. Long last, I'm getting married. Yeah.
Right, let me see if I can get back to this a different way. So, we started with, as Joe mentioned, a keynote at the Summer Institute. You can get a sense of the energy and the excitement about the power of education that Mary brings to her interactions with various stakeholders. We had her as a guest speaker on opening day, you were all there, and just a teaser, and then a longer address on August 30th. And one of the things that really stood out to me is how people lingered to talk to her on the Friday before a long weekend because the message or their feeling about what she did for their students while she was with us was so powerful. Her focus was really thinking about how belonging plays a role in making education powerful or not, and the importance of being seen, especially for people that have been displaced. So, she talks about her father, for example, who had status and identity in Sudan, but when he crossed the border, was really only seen as a refugee. And I think one of the things that was really powerful is her talk centered on the fact of her own experience, but not just her experience. And she raised awareness about the role of displacement for lots of people all over the world. She is ambassador for a subset of the UN, and so, it's part of her work, she tries to raise awareness about the number of people displaced, 120 million people in 2024. And she talked about displacement being something that happens within countries when people have to move as a result of climate change, or when they have to move because of different economic circumstances. And when we think about the word refugee, it's pretty loaded, but when we think about displacement, we can all kind of empathize with what it's like when you have to find a new doctor, find a new school system, find a new, cross a language barrier. All of those things kind of impact your sense of belonging and your sense of welcome, and she really emphasized the little things that make a difference. And I think that that hit a note with staff, that her story was a way into thinking of how experiences can connect people or separate them, rather than making it about one group of refugees or her own experience. She visited classrooms, obviously, it was her first week of school. So, we had to choose very selectively, couldn't visit all five elementaries, and many teachers were extremely patient with us, but, you know, they didn't necessarily want a classroom visitor on day one or day two. So, we visited Coolidge and Beal to represent the elementary level. We were able to visit both middle schools and the high school, and these are just some pictures of, you know, second graders at Coolidge. One highlight from that moment was Mary walked into the classroom, and immediately, there's a new student who speaks Swahili, who looked at her and saw herself reflected in Mary's face, and they had a conversation in Swahili, and I'm just going to get emotional thinking about it. That kid's first week was made different because we had somebody who really represented her culture there. But Mary also connected with all kids that loved drama and theater. She played Zip Zap Zork with the middle schoolers and got them a little out of their comfort zone, and a game called Alien Interpreter, where kids had to kind of make up nonsense language and then think about language and the power of language and body language specifically. And she talked about the ways you can signal welcome with your body. And then, at the high school, you can see a real diverse group of students there who were able to engage with her a little bit more deeply, talking about their own experiences. And I just want to thank all of the teachers that welcomed us so warmly for the time that we were there. It really made such a powerful impact. It also enabled her to gather some data for us so that we could hear what students were willing to share with her and then reflect that back to staff on the last professional development day. And she also had an opportunity to connect with families at our evening event. So, we provided food, we had Central Office registrar Kevin Escalante and Assistant Finance and Operations Manager April Yu there, in an attempt to kind of provide some wraparound services and to really make sure that we had an opportunity to introduce ourselves and to link that with a visit from Mary. Although we had 85 people respond, and we had about half that kind of show up, and I'm really grateful, Sandy, that you were there to kind of see it. And families were able to attend with their children, which meant that the childcare impact was lessened. We also had facilitators there to help families that were struggling with English to communicate. And I was really impressed by the number of families that really took risks to share things directly. But what stands out for me is hearing from a Floral Street family who recognized that Mary's uncle was part of the same clan and had played a role in his being able to escape Sudan. That was another powerful moment. So, even though we're talking about refugees from around the world, some of those are represented in our Shrewsbury schools. And also, that Mary told me when I was driving her to the airport after the PD day that she was invited to dinner by a family who's newly arrived in Shrewsbury because they said they just really wanted to connect with her and how powerful it was. said they just really wanted to connect with her and how powerful it was for them to be able to sit and have some someone that they could talk to about their journey, in this case, from Texas to Massachusetts and some of the things that they were wondering about. And she took them up on their offer, which was really lovely. And she said it was it was really powerful for her too, to get a sense about what their experience was like. So then she brought all of this this wealth of information back to staff and shared, these are some things that parents and students told us they really value, that it's really helpful when we normalize translation and we're willing to kind of get our phone out, whether we feel, you know, comfortable with it yet or not, but that the fact that we're signaling that we're gonna struggle with that. Obviously, things that are obvious like being patient, pronouncing names correctly, thinking about ways that students can work in groups. And then some things that would surprise you from English learners, like keep me talking. I can develop my vocabulary better if you make me use English and I need some help with that, so please don't be afraid to call on me. I love this paragraph in in French that says, for my part, there isn't any one particular thing except that I'm trying to learn this new language called English and it would be helpful if I had more practice. I mean, it was just so articulate and it gives a sense of some of our students who are coming with facility in their own home language have a lot to say if we give them that opportunity. And in all her interactions, Mary shared her story and then talked about the power of education in kind of giving her hope and carrying her forward and asked kids to kind of think about the roles and the struggle that the education is playing for them and what they've had to persevere through and that they'll have to continue to persevere because that's what learning is sometimes. And I think that that was inspiring to students as well. She talked about finding hope in the Kakuma camp. And for those of you that couldn't hear her speak, this was eye opening for me because I think when I hear refugee camp, I think it's temporary and then the problem is over and it goes away. But for people who weren't able to see it, I think part of the two-way benefit of hearing from different perspectives is bringing a new awareness. So the camp that she kind of became a teacher and then ultimately got into college from was founded in nineteen ninety-two. It's been there for a long time. And there are a lot of people who are still there looking for opportunity. She talked a little bit about how in the camp, ninety-six percent of the children who are eligible attend primary school, but only six percent make it to the secondary level. And when they do, they share very limited materials and that out of that six percent that gets a secondary school, only one percent of them accepted into college. And so when she got into St. Olaf's in Minnesota, she founded a nonprofit as a college student. I think about her bridging cultures and and she said, you know, I really couldn't not do that because I knew all my friends were also trying to make this journey. And she founded it with a very small number of people and she continues to try to work to change that and was very excited to leave us and hear about a freshman who's enrolling at Tufts from Kakuma, thanks to her work with the nonprofit that she founded. And here's the ripple effect of this one very determined young woman who graduated in twenty twenty-three. I mean, just like this is a young kid. These are all of the universities where she's been able to work to place students from Elamisha Kakuma, which is the nonprofit that she organizes. And so I just want to close and I'd love to hear your thoughts, but I know if I was watching at home, I'd want to know, is there something I can do to help and contribute to this? Because Mary really contributed a lot to us. So within the slideshow and within the documents we'll share, there's lots of links to how you could help. But she really talked about the importance of thinking of community from where you are. Sometimes when we think about global problems, they seem really big and far away. So focus first on how do you foster belonging with your neighbors? You know, what's in your locus of control? Consider volunteering in our schools, whether your English is wonderful or not, because having diverse representation, even just having those small opportunities is really powerful. And maybe if you've got an empty nest, you might want to host a college student who's gotten into a local university and, you know, contacting her can give you a sense of that because she was looking for host families for to touch base with her tough student and help orient him to Boston as she was working with me on planning the Friday PD day. But mostly I just want to thank Joe for his efforts to hear that feedback at Summer Institute. We gotta get her back and then saying, well, what if we get her back for the whole week? That was a great idea and it was it was Joe's. So I'm really grateful that we had that opportunity and excited about thinking about doing that in future.
Great. Well, thank you for the report. Appreciate it. My colleagues' questions or comments?
And I did have the opportunity to go to the evening with families. And I think she's Mary's so engaging and she has a sense of humor with that message. And I just think as a speaker, it's it's so powerful, but it's probably one of the best events that I've been able to attend as a school committee member in all my years because it's something that we all need to belong, we all want to be, we want to feel that we're part of a community. And that whole piece around displacement and the way she discussed it, because I think in my mind, I was also thinking more in a refugee. But you can have a student move from Texas to Massachusetts and things are totally different. And how do we make that child belong and have a feeling that they have friends? So it's she just had a wonderful message for all four corners of an issue. And thank you for for doing that and, you know, providing a week-long experience for teachers. I think it was probably one of the more powerful things we've done again in my tenure here.
Awesome. Yeah, I can honestly say I know opening day is one of our our highlights for school committee members with the staff welcoming them back. And I just thought her opening day remarks were outstanding, very impactful to the nine-hundred-and-fifty staff that were present on opening day. And I love that we've also engaged with families on this presentation, including, you know, her words in in classrooms and amongst our staff. So thank you for arranging this. Great way to kick off the new year for sure. Dr. Sawyer, any further comments?
Thank you, Ms. Clutter, for the presentation and for she did all the work to make this happen, which is really much appreciated. I think that one thing that struck me was that both, you know, anytime I saw her connecting with families, I was able to be in a classroom at the high school where she was with some students for a little bit. And then certainly in the keynote on Friday, August thirtieth, with the staff. And she invited staff to share things that they thought were working or that they had questions about or how they could. I think it built and I think we have a strong sense of empathy for students who are coming from different backgrounds and different situations. But I think this really brought it to a different level of perspective. And I think staff that I've spoken with feel that that message really resonated. And I think it just gives us a better sense of what our students and our families who come from someplace else might be experiencing. And I think it's been a hallmark of our school district for a long time. I think in recent years, with the increasing amount of diversity that we have in our community, it's become that much more important. We still have work to do, but I know we're in a stronger place than we have been. And I think that we're committed to continuing to work to make sure that all of our students and families really do have a true sense of belonging in our school district. So thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. The next item on our agenda is also a time scheduled appointment. It is a report on the school facilities summer maintenance. Chris Girardi, our assistant superintendent of finance and operations, and Keith Baldinger, our assistant town manager of operations, will present a report on the summer twenty-twenty-four maintenance projects, including capital repairs and improvements that were completed across all school buildings. Welcome.
Thank you.
Glad to be back.
So up here. All right, thank you. I think I speak for myself and the folks sitting with me where we're really grateful to have the opportunity to come up and to speak about all the work that happens during the summer that often goes unseen from from a lot of folks. So to come to school committee to present to you and to speak to the community, I think there's a lot of pride with the work that's done. It begins on the last day of school, you know, as as staff are leaving, custodial crews are coming in and preparing. It's a very steady schedule from that last day of school to the first day of school, working within and around summer programming and really putting schedules together to get the schools prepared for the first day of school. So with that, I'll allow Keith to introduce his team and we'll walk you through a slideshow to talk to look at some of the maintenance work that was happening over the summer as well as some capital projects that we're working on.
So good evening, everybody. Keith Baldinger, assistant town manager of operations. I may have been in the seat before. Next to me is Joe Sexton. He is our brand new public buildings division manager. He is on day seven. Didn't really feel right passing this off to him, so I'm pinching.
Tried.
Behind me, we have John Hamilton. He is our assistant division manager of custodial services. He so if it's, he manages our custodians and cleanliness of all buildings. Next to him is Bill Tuttle. He is our public, he is our assistant division manager of maintenance. If it's broken, he fixes it. Next to him is Pat Finicom, who's fairly new to public buildings. He started in July, right, Pat? June, June? He's our assistant division manager of night custodial operations. So if it's dirty at night, he takes care of it. And then missing from this evening is Joel Manzi. He's our assistant division manager, plant manager at SHS, who manages that entire building. We also have five maintenance craftsmen and fifteen custodians throughout the district. These people are truly the behind the curtain group that makes all of this work. And, you know, Chris mentioned, you know, summer summer work starts the day after school. Well, that's not quite true because it actually probably starts the first day of the previous year of school. We're already thinking now about what we're doing next summer. But this team makes it happen and we're very fortunate to have some very highly skilled people, super organized, to make this happen. I mean, there's over a million square feet of building, almost a million, you know, little over nine hundred thousand of that is schools. And we have twenty-five staff that make all of that happen. So there's a lot of coordination and logistics that gets these buildings in the condition that they're in. So we're fortunate. This first slide, so these show two areas, Parker Road Preschool and Patent Cafeteria. They've been waxed and refinished. These two actually were done by town staff. A lot of our buildings are done by contracted employees, but these were done by town staff. And this, you know, it's a summer project, but this is every year. Like this is always on the list. We're doing all all of our buildings, schools, particularly because that's when they're empty during that time. So there's a lot, there's a lot of coordination and that's what John and Pat do is they make sure that our contractors are getting this work done and then we're meeting the high standards that we expect here. You know, we have, as you know, buildings of multiple age range, so we try to always make them look like they're brand new. Not always. Doesn't come out that way because we know how old they are, but they do a great job keeping in the condition they're in. This is a project that came up in fall town meeting for twenty twenty-three, I believe. We allocated some funds to put some portable air conditioning in some of our in four of our buildings in areas that are typically warm or very warm. And Chris may want to talk to that a little bit about why that's important for our students and staff, because all of our buildings do have air conditioning.
Sure. I think, you know, in speaking with Dr. Sawyer, I know one of his goals is to have air conditioning in all of our buildings at some point. But we were able to get some funding through the town to purchase some, you know, some units that we could put into classrooms. Last last September gave us a good litmus test where we had some really warm weather over multiple days. And Dr. Sawyer and I were out in classrooms with our wet bulb thermometers, testing temperature and humidity to get kind of the real feel of the classrooms. And some of them were pretty oppressive. And, you know, as we move into a world where the climate is changing, really considering how we can adjust to make sure that we're not missing school. You know, back in our days, it was always about snow. I think more and more every year, we're looking at potential school cancellations because of heat. So working with the town, we were able to purchase a number of units where we were able to focus on our warmest areas. Now, it didn't tackle all the areas. There's still definitely areas at Shrewsbury High School, Oak Middle School in particular, and even areas of the other schools where if we were able to bring more on, it would be even better. But with the funding that we had, we identified areas that we felt were the most necessary. And they do an okay job. You know, we had some growing pains back in the spring when we we put them in. Some schools where we thought would have fuse issues, we did not. In other schools where we thought were going to be fine, we had fuse issues. And again, Keith's team has done a really nice job of responding to the needs of those of those classrooms. You know, it's not making the classrooms feel like you're in your car in an air conditioner, but it's taking some of the humidity and some of just the oppressiveness out of the classrooms to where they're a little bit more functional for learning. So I think that's a, that's the piece around the air conditioning units.
So this is Beale School. These are outdoor classrooms. The slide's really up here to show a shout out that, you know, we don't just take care of the inside of the buildings, we do the outside of all buildings too. And Kevin Esposito and Ryan Puntbrand with the Parks Division had their team help us out with these to get them looking like they're new again.
Yeah, and just a piece around this, having been the former principal of Beale, these two areas are pretty important because they're handicap accessible. This type of this type of gravel is was laid there very specifically to allow wheelchairs to access all of the the learning that happens outside. So a big thank you for helping us keep that area clean.
So this is Floral Street School. As you know, the building has exceeded its twenty twenty-five years at this point. So I think two town meetings ago, we we funded this capital project, about a half million dollars to replace the roof on this building. We got really favorable bids, so we were in the low four hundreds when this this project went out and that was done over the summer. This is the Floral Street School Gymnasium. So this is a full sanding and refinishing project. Over the past five years, all of our large gyms have been completely refinished. And actually, our patent school gym has also been refinished too. But so this is the this is the last of the big ones to be done. And so this gives Joe a little bit of breathing room, you know, for the next few years, we have to do another one. This is Floral Street School Carpeting. You may recall this from other years too. This is, I believe, we're in the fourth year of this. So with typically every summer, we do, we pick new areas to do. This year, we did Media Center and I think some classrooms too, right?
Teachers Lounge.
Teachers Lounge, that's what it was, yep. So I think all that's left in this building are classrooms on the second floor, I believe. So we expect that we'll take care of that next next summer and that building will completely be carpeted. We've been using that, we've been using public buildings operating funds to do that, which is why we're spreading it out over time. This is a big project. This is the Oak Window Project that you're all aware of with this MSBA accelerated repair project. This building was originally, this project was originally around four million dollars. We got really favorable bills on that, bids on this. So it's about, we saved almost a million dollars on that, so around three million bucks. This was truly a summer slammer that went up to the first day of school and a couple days after and they're still and the inside of the inside of work is all complete. There's still, you'll still see them working on that building, doing caulking on the outside and finishing that up. It was, these are the finished windows. This project, all in all, went very well over the summer. The contractor seems to be, you know, they did some great work on this. They were responsive like we were, but we were up against school opening because of manufacturing lead times. But they, for the most part, got it done. It was about ninety-nine percent on windows on the day of day school opened. So it was done well. We appreciate that.
All right, so I think that's it. Those are kind of the highlights we wanted to share with you on top of the day-to-day cleaning of our enrichment programs and our special, summer special education programs where the custodians are also just maintaining the buildings that are being occupied during the summer, summer portion of the year. So thank you to Keith. Welcome to Joe.
Thank you.
Thank you to the team. And if you have any questions or or comments, happy to take them.
Great. For the report, colleagues, any questions or comments? Ms. Effernan?
Yeah, I want to thank you all. I work in the infrastructure.
Yeah, I want to thank you all. I, I work in the infrastructure business myself in a different sort of way. And the amount of coordination and planning and planning and planning. And I just think about, well, two town meetings ago, we voted on a thing. And the one town meeting ago, we voted on it. And now we're just getting it done, right? And these, the, the, the life cycle costs for, for these things and understanding, how long are we going to keep a roof? How long are we going to keep an AC unit? Balancing the trade-offs that you have to do between using your staff time, bringing in contractors to do big surge projects and get them done in what are, for those of us who are parents, the summer goes very fast. Suddenly, we're right back at it. And so they're in the, in the buildings. But also just really want to take a moment to appreciate the, not only the partnership of the individuals in this room, but the partnership between sort of the schools and the town to, to make this work. I don't, I don't think most people understand. They think the schools, like, belong to the school department and, you know, but yet this is a much more complicated relationship and, and, and the bearing of a lot of those costs for us. I mean, they're not on the school department budget. They're on the town budget. And the, both the appreciation that I feel for that relationship and how incredibly positive it has, it has been over at least my years here on the, on the school committee. But also the opportunity cost of not staying on top of these things, right? They're, you're, just like your own house, right? You got to do, you got to do it all the time and you cannot want to do it. My spouse happened to be working on our gutters today and it's not even a hot day. And the roof was terrible. And I'm thinking, you're doing this roofing project in the middle of the summer. There's a lot of black there. And, and I want to also just really appreciate the members of Town Meeting who supported the portable AC units. I know there was some thought and question and long-term and sort of the, the cost-benefit trade-offs of, of AC in that way. But we know for, not just our kids, and many of whom are vulnerable and some have medical issues, for our staff to work in those buildings, that can be awfully, awfully oppressive. And then hoping that, that kids and staff are all going to rise and be their best. And that's an impossible situation to ask for. So I know it's an area we continue to, to need to work on as a, as a town. And I support Dr. Sawyer's goal of AC in all the buildings eventually as part of a long-term plan. But really just want to appreciate what was, I'm sure, a little challenging to figure out how to ma, how to make work, even though I know we still have some, some work to do, to do there. So again, my appreciation to all the members of Town Meeting and the Select Board who put that forward and ultimately voted on that, that expense. Because I think it might not be making it car AC cool, but hopefully it's making it tolerable and that, and that the kids and the staff can do their jobs. Thank you.
Further comments, Ms. Fritz?
And thank you, because I think as a taxpayer, or all taxpayers here, too, and we look at our buildings, some of them may be older. And I think of our K-4 study that you were on with us, Keith. And going into spring, patent and Coolidge, some of our older schools, they may be older, but they're in good condition and they're clean. You've, over the years, everybody in this unit has helped retrofit spaces. So there's always a pride in making sure that the schools have what they need to provide educational services. And it's, people will think that the high school is fairly new. And we're like, no, it's over twenty years old. But they don't see that because it's so well-maintained. And that goes to good fiscal responsibility, too. So we appreciate that. Our students appreciate it. So thank you for everything that you all do.
Ms. Fisher?
I'd also like to thank you. Your report was very helpful. And I'd also like to just mention that partnership with the MSBA to get the Oak project completed as well. And again, that was also a great fiscal, you know, fiscally responsible to try to leverage those funds to get that, you know, expensive project done for the district.
All right. Yes, I definitely appreciate all the work you do, especially just getting the buildings ready for our students and staff. You're such a critical part of our back-to-school success. So really thank you, not just for the back-to-school success, but just year-round, just outstanding what you're doing. And, you know, certainly excited to see the implementation of those AC units, especially in the upper floors. I know I've had two kids go through the high school and they're now jealous that they're, they're missing out on cooler temperatures in, in some of those rooms. So, so thank you for all that you do. Appreciate the partnership between school and, and building operations in the town. And certainly the support of Town Meeting members, as, as Ms. Heffernan said, definitely helpful to the betterment of these facilities. So thank you so much. Dr. Sawyer?
Thank you. You know, I think that anytime, I think for a lot of people, it certainly is true for me, even though I'm in the business, so to speak, when I visit other communities for different reasons, I think it says a lot about a community, what their schools look like and how clean they are and how well-maintained they are. And that's been a point of pride in Shrewsbury as long as I've lived here and as long as I've had the opportunity to work here. And that just can't happen without the really hard work and, and expertise of the Public Buildings Division and all of the, all of their team members, as well as our partners who contract with us as well to clean. But we have a very strong relationship, very responsive. You know, we're looking forward to Joe coming on as a new member and some other changes. I, you know, we, I think that's really, again, but my entire career, always the, the intent is to try to get the schools what they need as best we can within the resources that the town has to do the job. So appreciate all the work that was done this summer. And ultimately, it makes a difference in terms of the pride we feel in our schools. And as was mentioned also, especially with the, you know, some efforts at climate control, the conditions that our faculty and staff work in and that our, our children learn in. And so we'll keep working at it. But we're very, very proud of, of the quality of our schools in terms of their cleanliness and their maintenance. So thank you.
Great. Thanks so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Right. The next item on our agenda is a time-scheduled appointment. It's a report regarding the homeless students in our district. And Dr. Sawyer will provide an update on ways in which the school district has been supporting our homeless students and their families since the emergency shelter opened in Shrewsbury in May of 2023, and plans to continue this work in the upcoming year, along with changes in homeless student enrollment for this school year. Dr. Sawyer?
Sure. There's a memo that I did send to the school committee. And I'll just summarize that here for you and for those watching. As you referenced, it was May of twenty-three that the emergency shelter was opened at a hotel in Shrewsbury. I am proud of the work that our district has done to serve the needs of those students and families, which are unique in different ways. And I know that's going to continue and already has continued this school year. Has been noted in the local media, in late August, the, the shelter in Shrewsbury moved from the hotel it was in to a new location, a different motel site in Shrewsbury. It is noteworthy that a very large number of the students who had been at the previous shelter have now moved into permanent housing. In a small number of cases in Shrewsbury, in other cases in other communities, Worcester and elsewhere. And so the population in the shelter now, there's some who were there last year for some period of time, but a lot of new families as well. This shelter is going to not have as much capacity as the previous shelter. Not dramatically different, but it's really hard to predict how many students we're going to have over time because of a variety of choices that families have under the law, depending on what their circumstances are. And so for our current situation, we actually have eighteen students who are enrolled in our schools here in Shrewsbury from the shelter at this point in time. Those eighteen students are as follows. There's one who's eligible for preschool services at Parker Road Preschool. The majority are at Beal School. There's twelve students there, eight of whom are in kindergarten, three first graders and one third grader. We have a couple of fifth graders at Sherwood and one sixth grader. None of those students are at Oak at this point. And then Shrewsbury High School has one eleventh grader and one twelfth grader. So compared to the fifty-one to fifty-seven students at different times of the year we had last year, that's a much smaller number. Our understanding is that there are some open rooms at the new shelter that they're choosing not to fill yet as they've made this transition. Initially, they've kind of paused that. But we do expect more rooms to be filled, so we expect some additional enrollment from that. But there are also, at the shelter, eight students who are living there, whose families moved from another district and are exercising their right to remain enrolled in that district. So our responsibility under the McKinney-Advento federal law around homeless education is that we share the cost, we split it fifty-fifty with that district to transport those students. So whatever district they might happen to be in, whether it's east of us on Route Nine or across the bridge in Worcester, we share the transportation cost to have those students go every day from the shelter in Shrewsbury to this, what they, is known as their, as their school of origin when they first were there. And that, and that continues through as long as a student is still considered homeless. Or if they receive permanent housing, and this was a situation we had last year in a number of cases, they can remain in their school for the remainder of that school year. And then it would have to change to the district where their permanent housing is for the following year. So in addition to those students, we also have some students who are, were at the shelter in Shrewsbury last year. They were shifted to a different shelter in Worcester. Because of that eligibility rule, they're, they chose to stay in Shrewsbury Schools. So those students are being transported back to Shrewsbury. And there's three of them at Beal and one at the high school who are in that category. And then finally, there are eight students across our district, one at Coolidge, one at Floral, and two each at Sherwood Oak and the high school, who are homeless but not part of the shelter system. The, the terminology that's used typically is doubling up. This is, these are students and families who lost their housing for some reason. And they are doubling up, living with family or friends within Shrewsbury. That can happen the other way around. Someone in Shrewsbury who loses their home in Shrewsbury and maybe double up with someone in a nearby community who have the right to return to, to maintain their, their enrollment in Shrewsbury. So as, you know, as you can tell, it gets very complex. I know Mr. Girardi's spoken to this around a lot of moving pieces and a lot of change that happens over the course of the year. I do want to mention, of course, that in terms of providing resources to educate these students, the, the state last year provided a couple of different funding sources. The, the most significant one was that for students in the emergency shelter who were enrolled in our schools, we received a hundred and four dollars per day for each student that, when they were enrolled in the school district. And over the course of last school year, that totaled over nine hundred and thirty thousand dollars ultimately that we received. Because of our concerns that, that funding source may not continue, we were very conservative in terms of how we spent those dollars last year. They were at our discretion. And we spent a little more than half of them, but we carried forward over four hundred and thirty thousand this year to make sure we could continue to provide services that were required. We were notified just yesterday that, that a hundred and four dollars a day will continue at least through December. It's funded through December at least, and, and the hope is that that would continue beyond that. But that will require some action at the state level. The caveat is that, that will go to students who have been in our district, enrolled with us, in, in their, living in a shelter in our schools. And they came to us after October first of last year, thinking that if they were here before October first last year, they're essentially factored into our Chapter Seventy funding and they're kind of part of the district at that point. That only, I'm not even sure how many students that applies to. It's a small number, again, because there's been a fair amount of turnover in the, in the shelter itself. The funding that we have, we're utilizing it a variety of different ways. We have some resources that we are providing to our students, both in the form of personnel as far, in addition to other kinds of resources. We did hire a full-time last year family coordinator who continues with us, Jennifer Stern-Robins, who's done an excellent job with that. And she's bilingual, makes excellent connections with the families, understands their culture. In addition to that, Felicity Boivier, our school district social worker, is the key liaison to the families in the shelter and has done excellent work to help coordinate that. She did some extra work during the summer to make sure that we were up and running and those families would be able to, to have a, a good start to the school year in their new school district. Additionally, we have added a couple of English language education teachers that we're continuing this year. We are in the second year of a contract, Houston Family Services, for some contracted services. Last year, we used that for some counseling services. This year, we're using it for, actually for some additional social work services because we felt that was a greater need for us. As Felicity's spending a lot of time with the folks in the shelter, it gives us more capacity across the district. We created a transition program last year, as you know, for some students' needs. We have not seen that level of need at this point. That said, we, we, as we mentioned, that program is transitioning into a therapeutic program that's, that, you know, any student who qualifies can access. But we're utilizing those funds to continue that and, and evolve that program. And then some additional power professional support and, and translation services and, you know, things that we might need in terms of materials or, or equipment, you know, for that programming, especially English language education in particular. So, you know, we're being thoughtful and we're, the fact that we were able to be conservative last year certainly puts us in a strong position. Financially, we're not worried that we will need to take money that's earmarked elsewhere in our budget and shift it. You know, obviously, if the state funding dries up at, at the mid, after December, we'll have to take a look where we're at. But again, we're being very prudent in how we utilize those funds. There was another funding source last year that existed, that every time a new student came to the shelter, there was just an initial thousand dollars that you received, kind of for startup costs. That has been discontinued. I think the sense was that districts had more of a chance to prepare and know what the realities were as opposed to when things had just, you know, were, were coming online with these, with these shelters across the, across the Commonwealth. So, you know, with that, again, you know, the total number of homeless students we're responsible for right now is thirty-eight students, thirty of whom attend schools within the district, and eight who are attending schools in their district of origin. There's a lot of complexity. Kim Fitzpatrick in our, in our office manages a lot of the funding pieces through the grants. Mr. Girardi is key, certainly, in, in working on, making sure this is, the, the resources are provided. And all of the folks in our schools, you know, the teachers, our educators, our administrators are, are doing good work to make sure that all of our students, of course, who are newcomers, regardless of where they may be from or where they may happen to live in Shrewsbury, are getting the best education possible. So with that, happy to answer any questions or hear any comments that the, the committee has.
Great. Thank you. Questions or comments? All right. So, thank you for the report. Certainly appreciate all the work that's being done by our staff to support the homeless students and their success in our district. So, thank you so much. All right. The next item on our agenda is under policy. It is a vote that's needed on the no homework calendar for 2024, 2025. Per school committee policy number 523, homework policy, each year, the superintendent will present a recommended calendar for, of no homework dates for the school year for the approval of the school committee. Once approved, the dates and expectations for no homework periods will be communicated to students, families and educators and periodically throughout the year. A memo from Dr. Sawyer was enclosed for us to review. And the recommended no homework calendar for the 2024, 2025 school year is also enclosed. Dr. Sawyer?
Thank you, Mr. Wensky. I'll give a brief summary of the memo and the recommendation. First off, it's important to note that adjustments made to my recommendation for the calendar this year are based on the feedback we received from families and students at the high school and faculty and staff last year in June. I think in future years, we'll likely roll this into our, our calendar conversation. But we wanted the first year under the new policy to be complete before we received, got some feedback on, about how, how things worked. There's information in your memo about that. I think sort of the key pieces I would highlight is that at the elementary and the middle school level, really across all levels, as far as families, when asked about, you know, the number of no homework dates that there were, there was pretty much consensus that they were pretty happy with what the number we had last year, which was fifteen total dates that there was no homework due. The faculty at the elementary and middle school, particularly more probably at their lower middle school grades, felt similarly. There was a very different perspective from our high school faculty, where they felt that there were too many no homework dates that it was getting in the way of some of the progress they needed students to make through the, the curriculum and the instructional program. And there's some things that are unique to the high school in terms of the way the high school schedule works, where you don't, classes don't meet every day. There's a period that's dropped each day. And depending, teachers who have students who are in the same, same class but different sections could end up getting kind of off-kilter in terms of the timing of different things because of where no homework dates might happen to fall. So, you know, trying to be responsive to our educators who are responsible for advancing our students' success academically, of course. We wanted to take another look at whether or not we might be able to back off a bit, keeping the spirit of the policy, of course, but also maybe not have. And there were particular times of the year where they felt there might be a little bit of choppiness depending on the, the, the school calendar. So as a result, the recommendation you have before you this evening, there's three holidays, federal holidays, that last year were deemed as no homework dates that this year are not. They would be weekends that at the high school level, in the middle school level, teachers could assign homework if they so chose and felt they needed to, to, to advance the, the academic program. That's Veterans Day, where that weekend actually falls between a recommended no homework date for DiWali and Thanksgiving break. So again, kind of that choppiness of having too many in too short a period of time, and that's where it seemed to play in. Similarly, Martin Luther King Weekend in, in January, which falls between December vacation and then and then Lunar New Year at the end of January, and then Memorial Day at the end of May, when we're really approaching into final exams there at the high school level in particular. So those are three dates after consulting with the high school leadership team, the leadership team overall, that I determined we would recommend to remove from the calendar of no homework dates. There are a couple of dates that last year were included that actually fall on weekends this year. That's the start of Ramadan, the Muslim holy month, and also Passover, the Jewish holiday. And I want to just take this opportunity to reiterate, because some of the feedback in the survey from families and we have to keep communicating around this to try to build clarity. The intent of the calendar certainly is not that every religious observance that a family might have is going to be included in the calendar for the overall district. The idea is that where there are some opportunities, where there are religious observances that we know a significant number of our students are going to not be doing homework because they'll be observing their religious services and whatnot, and under state law and our own local district policy, those students must be given accommodations to be able to have, make up that homework, to combine that with the idea that the policy calls for periodic respite from homework to allow students to catch up, to focus on other things if it's over vacations or holiday weekends, to allow for family time. So we're trying to combine those two ideas. Regardless of whether a religious holiday is deemed a no homework weekend or date for the district, students who practice that faith are excused from their homework, and we just need to make sure there's good communication between the student or their family and the teacher to make sure that that can be done, and we'll continue to work on communicating that effectively. So the recommendation that you have in your packet is that the first no homework date would coincide with Rosh Hashanah in early October, followed by, in our school calendar, Columbus Day and Indigenous Peoples' Day weekend. This year, Yom Kippur, the Jewish High Olah Day, happens to coincide with that weekend. Again, different years, things are going to look differently depending on where certain holidays fall if we stick with this approach. That's followed by Diwali. I did consult with a member of our Hindu community who consulted with other members of the community here in Shrewsbury, and based on the typical practice, a multi-day feast, but based on the practices and kind of where it falls, it felt that the, having the evening of October 31st and so that homework was not due on November 1st, which is the main feast day of Diwali, but there's some services the previous evening as well, made the most sense, so that's what's recommended, followed by Thanksgiving break, then December vacation from December 23rd through January 1st, Lunar New Year this year, which falls on Wednesday, January 29th, and then February vacation, which is the week of President's Day. Eid Outfitter, the Muslim holiday, which we don't know exactly when it will begin because that can vary depending on the sighting of the moon according to the Muslim faith, but it's over a weekend this year, so we're pretty consistent, which day things won't be due on Monday, March 31st as a result of Eid Outfitter, followed by the April vacation, the week of Patriots' Day. That would be the last official no homework week, time, those two weekends, and this year, Good Friday and Easter, both for the Western and Eastern faith as well as Orthodox faith, this year both on April 18th and 20th, which is represented right at the beginning of the April vacation this year. So that is the recommended, it means that there are nine school days when homework will not be due, and that that represents about 5% of the 180 school days in the year, and it represents nine weekends. Some of those breaks, of course, are weekends back-to-back, which is about 22% of the 41 total weekends that fall during the school year. I think it achieves what the policy is intended to, and I would ask, if you're comfortable with it, to vote this evening so we can start to communicate that at the various curriculum nights and other methods, that we'll be publishing it and sending it out to families and faculty and staff to make sure that there's clarity about what these dates are. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you so much. Colleagues, questions, comments? Ms. Heffernan?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Wensky, and thank you, Dr. Sawyer. I think that it's important as a district that we maintain excellence and high standards for all of our kids and young people, but I also think that it's important that we hear from our faculty about what's important to make sure that our young people can be successful. I don't think that we're being soft by trying to balance some time off and acknowledging that everybody for their own well-being can need that time, and I think this policy that I know is still new for us in many ways, I think, is an attempt to demonstrate some balance and some inclusivity. I really appreciate, and Dr. Sawyer, I want to just continue to recommend that we use every and all channels to communicate this out, not just because it's new, but because we know, we do hear some folks who continue to say, "Well, I'm worried about not doing, and I'm worried if I didn't do it or didn't..." I have a different holiday that's not on the list, and that is clearly the intent of this committee, and I know of you, Dr. Sawyer, to make sure that all those students and families feel that they have the ability to engage in whatever their religious accommodations are without any concern of repercussion. So, thank you so very much. I don't think my children are going to be happy tonight when I go home, but I think this is the right move to make to kind of bring, to make sure we're hearing from our faculty, particularly at that high school level, that young people need more time to be able to work on some of those projects and assignments. So, thank you very much. I'm very much supportive, Mr. Wensky.
Great, further comments? Ms. Schruber?
I also, I appreciate the honest feedback that we got from students and families and the staff. I agree, it's important to listen to everybody, but I think especially the faculty, and this is their job, and we want to support them in that. But I also appreciate your flexibility, Dr. Sawyer, to tweak the schedule and to respond to that feedback. Obviously, we'll get through this year. We'll see how this goes, and if we need to tweak, we tweak, but this seems to be a good balance between what our goal is and also supporting the staff in the buildings as well.
Great, yeah, thank you so much. I do support the new homework policy or calendar as proposed. I think, you know, communication is key. We're always looking for feedback from the community. And as we said at the beginning of the meeting, we have public participation if people have questions or concerns about policy, and I appreciate that we've engaged all voices in this, students, staff, and families. So with that, if there are no further questions or concerns...
I just want to note for the record, though, I want to be clear that the high school students preferred more no homework. There was more of the consensus there, but appreciated. There was some of that feedback. That was unsurprising to me.
Voices have been heard, yes, absolutely. All right, so with that, I need a motion that the school committee vote to approve the no homework calendar for 2024-2025 school year as presented.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please do so by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much. All right, the next item on our agenda is also under policy. It is a first reading of our teen dating violence policy. This is the first reading of a draft of policy 714, Teen Dating Violence. The intent of this policy is to meet the requirement of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 71, Section 2C, to implement a specific policy and discipline code to address teen dating violence in public schools. Members of the policy subcommittee, Erin Boucher and Rachel Sharifabor, have reviewed the draft, as did our legal counsel, and a copy was enclosed in our packet along with a memo from Dr. Sawyer. And for tonight, Ms. Sharifabor will go through that first reading for us.
Okay. So Massachusetts school districts, under Mass. General Law, Chapter 71, Section 2C, are required to have specific policy and discipline code in place to address dating violence in our public schools. The policy shall clearly state that dating violence will not be tolerated and shall include guidelines for addressing alleged incidents of dating violence. The law states further, the topics to be covered in the policy should include, without limitation, defining the issue of teen dating violence, recognizing the warning signs, identifying issues of confidentiality, safety, and appropriate legal school-based interventions. This policy subcommittee has met together to create the proposed policy, Policy 714, Teen Dating Violence, which the school committee was provided in their packets this week. This policy addresses the topics outlined in the law. The policy has been reviewed by the district's legal counsel and meets the requirements of the law. Shrewsbury Public Schools is committed to creating a safe, supportive, and respectful school environment. The district is committed to maintaining a setting for learning that is free of violence and harassment among students, staff, and visitors in our schools, and the district will not tolerate any displays of teen dating violence at school, on school grounds, or at school functions. Additionally, retaliation against an individual who has complained about teen dating violence or has cooperated in an investigation of teen dating violence will not be tolerated. A copy of the proposed policy will be made available on our website tomorrow. We welcome all feedback on this policy, and we encourage those of you who are watching at home to please read through this. And if you have comments, to email us at schoolcommittee@shrewsbury.k12.ma.us. At this time, if the committee has any questions or comments about the policy that was in your packet, we are happy to answer questions you may have.
Great, thank you so much, colleagues. Any questions or comments? Okay. Dr. Sawyer, any further comments?
I appreciate the work of the policy subcommittee, and as we do with any policy, it'll be posted, and welcome feedback from the community before we ask the school committee to vote to implement at your next meeting on September 25th, I believe it is.
Great, thank you so much for the report. Definitely encourage the public to reach out and provide any feedback that you might have on that first reading, so thank you so much. The next item on our agenda is under Finance and Operations. It is an FY25 Grants Report and Vote to Accept. Federal and state entitlement grants are an important source of funding for our school operations. Entitlement grants are established and allocated at the state and federal level. Entitlement grants are non-competitive and are rewarded automatically on the basis of defined formulas that differ by grant. The enclosed report to the school committee includes the amount of funding the district is receiving in FY25, as well as a five-year history. Mr. Girardi is here to summarize the information for us as presented to the committee. Mr. Girardi?
Thank you. This is an annual report and a request for a vote from school committee, per state law of school committee voting on receiving entitlement and competitive grants for the fiscal school year, this being fiscal '25. In your report, you will see that the amount is $2.35 million of funding that we receive in grants, and this is slightly down from FY24, where we received $3.5 million in grants. A couple of areas here just to point out, just to show some difference. First is, and as Dr. Sawyer said a few moments ago when he was speaking about the emergency homeless shelter, we haven't received official notice that we will receive the $104 per student per day funding yet, so that has not been factored in, whereas what that's comparing to are the funds that were received through the totality of FY24. Secondly, it does not include one-time grants such as the High Quality Instruction Materials Grant that Ms. Clouder and her team were able to obtain last year in the amount of $250,000. Those are grants that are obtained over the course of the school year, and we intend, like we do every year, to apply for similar grants with the goal of ending FY25, again, with additional grant funds beyond what is being shown here. In any of those grants, we will come to school committee and request school committee to vote on those grants. A couple of other important notes is, September 30th marks the end of our SR3 grant funding, where we need to expense all SR3 grants by that date. We shared a presentation back in June with our plan to expend those funds, and we are on track, as shared during that presentation, that those funds will be expensed by September So each grant comes with a specific purpose. We have compliance and reporting requirements and accountability for use of these funds. I'm very grateful for different folks across the district who are responsible for these funds. Dr. Sawyer, I've mentioned Kim Fitzpatrick, who does run our grants program in our business office. She's very on top of things as far as deadlines and how we are to expense these funds and report them to the state, to Ms. Belcito and the special education team. They're responsible for a lot of grant funding that they manage, and again, her team, in particular Denise Barros, the secretary for the Special Education Department, they do a terrific job at monitoring their grants and making sure that they are expensed as promised and on time. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions and recommend that the school committee vote to accept grant funds for FY25.
Great, thank you so much, colleagues. Any questions or comments? Ms. Heffernan?
Really quickly, Mr. Wensky, for those who are not looking at our packet, we are looking at two full pages of grants, and I want to just acknowledge that's a lot of accounting and tracking and reporting, and as much as I am always appreciative when staff come before us with a grant that they have won, there's an administrative cost to each and every one of these and on the reporting side, so I both share my appreciation but also want the public to know. It's a lot of work. I'm sure some are reimbursements, some want to be paid upfront. I can only imagine, and I just want to share my appreciation also for, I had an opportunity to say to Ms. Belcito earlier this week, staff spends a lot of time trying to find other dollars to support our students, and that often can offset things in the town appropriated budget or bring on new programming, or obviously support some of our, particularly some vulnerable students or groups, but there's a lot of staff time here. So I am also very appreciative of that, and $2.2 million is a non-trivial amount of fund, so thank you all very much for your work.
Thank you for acknowledging that.
Further comments? Again, thank you for the report, and thank you to everybody involved in preserving and applying for the $2.35 million of funding for FY25. As Ms. Heffernan said, I mean, I think about that in terms of what we don't have to request in the appropriated budget that's approved annually by town meeting, and a significant amount of funds for programming and resources, so thank you to everybody involved in keeping that going. So if no other questions or comments, I need a motion that the school committee vote to accept all FY25 grant funds noted in the enclosed chart and use such funds for their intended purpose.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much. All right, let's see, the next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. The minutes from the school committee meetings held on June 12th and August 27, 2024, and the school committee workshops held on June 12th and August 21st, 2024, been provided under separate cover in advance of this meeting. Any revisions or edits, there being none, they'll be approved as written. All right, we do need to go into executive session tonight, so therefore I need to request a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant in aid, Purpose 7, Open Meeting Law, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Sections 22, F and G, for the purpose of reviewing, approving, and/or releasing executive session minutes, and B, for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect of the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and chair, so declares, Purpose 3, the Shrewsbury Education Association, Units A and/or B, the Shrewsbury Paraprofessional Association, and/or the Cafeteria Workers Association, and C, for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, non-union clerical and support staff and/or administration, Purpose 2, where deliberation in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and return to open session only for the purpose of adjourning for the evening, may have a motion.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Roll call vote is required. Ms. Fritz?
Aye.
Ms. Boucher?
Aye.
Ms. Sharifabor?
Aye.
Ms. Heffernan?
Aye.
Myself, aye, thank you, and good night. Myself, aye, thank you, and good night.